Good, I'll start over again. Perfect. Good afternoon, good evening, everybody. And I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole community development meeting of November 4th, 2024. We're situated in council chambers today in Spencerville, Ontario. All right, I need to have an approval of the agenda. So we looked at the agenda. Do I have a mover for that?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor and seconded by councillor Martell. Okay, all in favor? Oh, sorry. Is there any changes you'd like to make? Nope. Okay, all in favor? Good. Excellent. Okay, moving on to number three, disclosure, pecuniary interest or conflict of interest or the general nature thereof. Does anybody have anyone to declare? Okay, hearing none. That's great. We'll move on to number four. You all got a copy of the of the meeting minutes from the last meeting this morning? Is there any business arising from those minutes from anybody? Hearing none. Good. Okay, then we move on to number five, 5A. South Grenville Students Real World Learning Program. And today we have, I think we're going to first have Tim East. You're going to speak first. Tim East is going to speak first. We also have with him Angela as well, as well as the lovely people who helped make this this presentation, Avery Grant and Isla. Is that right, Isla? Perfect. Okay, great. Mr. East, thank you. Hello? Oh, okay. That's actually, okay, cool. So my name is Tim East and I'm a history and well now a technology teacher at South Grenville District High School. Thanks so much for having us. So having us back, I should say, because we were here back in the springtime. So just to kind of go over why it is we're here. So about a year ago, year and a half ago, the Upper Canada District School Boards started a project called Real World Learning, or RWL for short. And the idea behind this was that if students can participate in projects that connect them with the community, they will be more engaged in their learning. And I think, you know, the past six months has certainly taught us that. So these these three kids, so Grant, Avery and Isla, have participated in creating a newsletter. And, you know, the idea was that, you know, it has to be a student-led idea. And just to give you guys some background, we had the council, some staff as guests in our class and kind of looking at how we could use technology in to enhance the township. And these three students came up with the wonderful idea of, well, why don't we have some sort of a township newsletter? And here we have it in reality here. And that has enabled them to use some of the programs that we've been using in the classroom. Maybe I'll let them talk about what program it is in a minute to create something for the real world. With that said as well, it has also given them, you know, skills such as corresponding with the municipality coming here tonight to meet you people and see how local government works, that sort of thing. So it has been, you know, I think, a good experience for us and a good experience for you guys. So thank you so much for for having us here. I'm gonna ask the kids to come up and talk about how they create the newsletter and what program they they use for that. So you think you guys can do that? All right.
So we use Canva to make our newsletter and we have multiple things that you guys asked for. So we have the colors, logos, pictures. So we have some of the rank. And then really just everything you could want from tech classes and youth of the year. But our main reason is we wanted to do this to keep people informed. And we want to do it, like, use our skills for something meaningful other than just on the computer or something. We've been using it to make our school newsletter as well, which we have some practice with that. But we wanted to do something else that's not really headed towards our school, something different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, do you have anything else to add, you guys?
Do you guys have any feedback on what we could do to make it different or any changes?
Well, that's a good question. I think we'll open it up to the floor over here and we'll we'll see what the rest of the people on council would like to say. Okay, I'll open it up to anybody else who would like to speak first. Thank you, Mr. Councillor Martell.
The newsletter is killer. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just thinking about it would be cool if there was a little bit of a distribution around the community, you know, a couple dropped here, a couple dropped there. Have you thought about that at all?
We haven't really, but I mean, that's something that we could really look forward to is getting that out everywhere. So, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Martell, councillor Smell?
Great presentation, young people. But I think I've looked at this and I don't see any of your names on there, like the editor or anything like that. So perhaps maybe you want to.
Yeah, we can add that.
I guess we could add that one too.
They're very modest.
You don't have to be modest. You don't have to be modest when you're doing it yourself.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, do you have something you want to add? Or you want, actually, I'll let you speak last. Mr. Deputy Mayor, move it yourselves.
I just, thank you so much and of what you did, and I haven't read it completely, truthfully. But what I see, I love and I hope you can continue doing something like that. I'm not sure about monthly, but at least quarterly for us. But if you can do it monthly, that's even better. And maybe to update anything that's going on in our community, to have something on the back of updating. That's, we have the bad, bad. We have an issue where we can't get stuff out to the public. Some people just don't have internet. Some people might not have it. But this would help us if you had, if you would put, you know, any updates that's coming up. So, well done.
Thank you.
You guys should be proud of yourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And I actually will say something and then I'll let the mayor finish off with her with her closing statements for the delegation. I think you did a great job. You know, it's it's it pops, it has colors and words in the right place. And and I like the content as well. And I think you did a great job of it. And it would be nice to see, to the deputy mayor's point, this getting out more. And as you probably didn't witness today, because we were here earlier than you guys were, we actually also just approved the final makeup of our new communications subcommittee. So we're hoping to use that to the deputy mayor's point to try and get the word out more and and help figure that out. And this could play a vital role in helping to get that done and help to see if we can get this out to more people as well, because the content is good here as well. And, you know, I mean, I think we'll see what happens in the future. But I think there's lots of lots of stuff we do that nobody knows about. And this might be a good medium for us to get our word out as well. So appreciate now the help you guys and the work you guys did on this. And hope you get a good mark for this as well.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thanks, Chris. To Tim and Angela, thank you for, again, this year, including the township and the real world learning process. I know last year it was so exciting seeing, you know, going to the school. And it was a little different, right, with the bench and the artwork and and the drive stick, right? For but it was three different things and it was all fantastic. And it is the beginning of something. And I think this year, especially with the excitement and the enthusiasm, when Joe and I and Dave were in and Mike, I think, was with us as well, right? Yep, in the classroom with with the students, the enthusiasm was great. I know we were, we talked to you guys and as we were walking away, you guys are still talking and shouting ideas and coming up with different stuff and bringing us back. So it was great. So Grant, Avery and Isla, you know, I really look forward to, you know, you've already done, you know, something that was beyond what I expected and what I thought. So I know that it's only going to get better. Your question to us was, what, you know, what do we want to see? I think we're more excited to see what, we're going to give you information. And I think, you know, with you and Mr. East and our township reps, I know you guys are going to figure out how to make this even better and better, but it already looks, you know, for our first, for issue number one. And, you know, it looks fantastic. It's kind of what I expected as a finished project. So it looks great. So I think from all of our group, you know, moving forward and looking forward, I can't wait to see what others come up with and what other ideas come out of the Real World Learning Project. It's fantastic. And I think from the council perspective, that there's anything else that we can do to help make this more successful. I know, Tim, you've already invited us back, or Mr. East, sorry, you've already invited us back for another discussion, you know, about QR codes and veterans. So we'll certainly be involved in that. But if there's anything else that we can do to help out, make sure that the, because the five are solidly behind this.
I just like to thank you guys, you know, the people and staff for being so wonderful to work with. You know, I am, I talked to colleagues across the UCDSB and other school boards as well, who I've heard about this type of project and they're envious, they're jealous. And they say that, you know, I try to get to work with, you know, my municipality. And I can't get them to answer the phone or answer an email or whatever. You guys come to our classroom and classroom, visit the school, interact with the kids. So thank you for making this possible. So again, great partnership and we look forward to seeing where it takes us.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Tim. I know when when we speak, we are five big kids though as well, if you know us. So maybe that's why we relate, we relate so so well. So so thank you all for for coming tonight and we look forward to the next next edition. Awesome job.
Thanks for having us.
No, thank you very much again.
Did you want to speak?
Maybe you can ask the community coordinator to expand on the distribution of the newsletter.
I certainly could. No problem. Yes, yes.
Now I will. So our economic development indications consultant and I were out in town today. We delivered some newsletters to businesses in Spencerville and to Cardinal, actually, right before this meeting. And we're going to go and visit Johnstown as well. So our local businesses have a copy and it was released on on social media today also. So everyone we spoke to and delivered the newsletter to had such great feedback. They were so excited to receive it and display it proudly on their front counters. They're asking when the next issue would be. We promised them monthly, so hopefully we can make it on that promise. And they're they're looking forward to it. So it was a really good experience. I almost felt bad delivering it and taking, getting all of the the good credit for for your hard work. But we made sure they knew that it was it was designed by the students.
Thank you very much. And I cannot wait to see summaries of the Development Committee meeting minutes coming out in there as well. That's awesome. Great. No, I'm just kidding. Don't do that. I'm just kidding. No, but thank you very much. Appreciate that. And, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And just to finish off, I do know that some people have to leave at seven o'clock. And much as we love our having our fans, our fans in the audience, I guess is how we interpret it. So we understand if you have to leave. We've been here alone before that it happens and we're we won't we won't be too sad, I know. So but anyways, thank you very much for coming. It was great and we really appreciate this. So thank you very much.
Take care.
All right. And with that, we're going to move on to number six. Let them leave. Yeah. Yep. All right, 6A is live land use planning. And number one is zoning considerations, domestic fowl coops. Community Development Coordinator, are you going to lead us through this? Nope. Oh, right, right. Our planner is going to take us through this. All right, Tim, sir.
Thank you through there, Mr. Chair. I guess this was a topic that was brought up back in June by the committee. And the committee had expressed an interest in the township looking into providing domestic fowl coops within the settlement areas of of the township. The township consulted with Nova Tech and they provided us with a report dated October 30. And in that report, they reviewed the zoning restrictions in regards to the the fowl coops and made some suggestions based on neighboring municipalities and other municipalities within Ontario as well, too. So in in reviewing the the report, I'm, I it it actually, I'm just trying to see here, suggests that a licensing system could be considered as well, too, as part of the the owners of the properties, providing the townships with a sketch showing the locations of the of the coops. And this would allow the township to ensure that all the coops are going to be located within the proper setbacks. And again, distances from the wells, which, again, we're concerned about in this case. Their recommendations didn't really stray much from what we already have in our bylaw. However, there are some minor tweaks that they suggest. I'll go through the proposed bylaw that they have written up. Now, in regards to private water services, so where there's a well on the property, the minimum lot area is still going to be maintained at 0.4 hectares, which is about one acre. And the fowl coops shall be 15 meters from any well. And and again, that's consistent with what our bylaw is right now. One thing that they did add, which was quite different from what's in there right now, is protection from the wellhead protection areas, the overlay and the intake protection zone overlay. So what they're saying here is the coop shall not be permitted within these protected areas. And again, that's to protect the water sources. Domestic fowl coops and runs, again, shall be three meters from a rear or interior lot line, which remains the same. Domestic fowl coops and runs shall be 10 meters away from any window or door opening of a dwelling or adjacent lot. Or actually, probably should say, from an adjacent dwelling as well, too. So so that remains the same. And again, what remains the same is the front and exterior side yards are not permitted. And keeping the same requirement of providing a minimum and a maximum floor space per hen. Now, there was some talk about not including this requirement on lands that are greater than five hectares in area in the agricultural designations or out in rural areas. And that's and that's typically because there are going to be a farming operation. Their lands are going to be obviously large enough to to accommodate this this type of use. So so the bylaw as well, too, the way that it's written, it will allow the coops to be permitted within a residential R1 zones and the R2 and R3 zones, hamlets, that sort of thing. So they are proposing to open it up to areas such as Cardinal and Johnstown as well, too. I guess if the committee has any questions in regards to this, feel free to shoot me some questions here.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, I'm opening up to the to the council or to the committee. Who would like to start first? Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Reading through the document certainly support, you know, having the the coops anywhere available, you know, in in the township. Understand the wellhead protection and the need for that. But I I struggle to, you know, I struggle with a one acre lot. And I struggle with a one acre lot simply because the people in Toronto are doing it on no size restricted lot. And we live in a rural area. I struggle to understand why we why we need a one acre lot. If we put the wellhead protection measures in, which are, I think it's 15 meters, you know, around around the wellhead, we go within with the nine foot or the three meter setback from from the interior lot lines and the 10 feet or 10 meters from a window or a door. I mean, those are pretty restrictive already, you know, encompassing. And I don't know if we have any one acre, like my my lot that I live on is enormous. And and I don't think we have too many of them inside the villages. The idea of this is to allow them inside, you know, the villages. So to me, I'd be in favor of getting rid of the the lot size altogether as long as we went with very strict, you know, measures on, you know, the wellhead protection and the the lot line delineations. I mean, and and I guess that would mean that I'm also in favor of, you know, a pre-locating sort of inspection. So, you know, here's where it can go, or if you've got one, here's where it needs to go. And I think as long as we can comply with those, get rid of the, in my opinion anyways, get rid of the the lot size.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Who's next? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
One more. Yep. We are. So the whole purpose of of what's the whole purpose of what, like, tonight? What are you, what are we looking from a staff perspective? What are you looking to get out of us so that we can?
Direction.
So the direction is to to schedule a public meeting, right? And then hear feedback. Is that right? So we're we're not actually debating what I just did then, right? Right, I did the wrong thing. So so I'm in favor of scheduling a public meeting.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, that's, I'm glad you brought it up, though, Mr. Mayor. Anyways, it's out there. I have one question. No roosters? I don't see anything in here but roosters.
No. Sorry, through there, Mr. Chair. No, roosters are prohibited within these areas.
Okay, so we're going with 10 fowl? Is that what we're having? 10 hens, I see?
Yes, that's correct. So 10 hens and no, no no roosters. And that's actually defined in the bylaw there as well, too, that there's no roosters to be permitted.
Right. And so the only, oh, yeah, we're not debating anything this. So, good, let's have a public meeting and see how many people show up. Thank you so much, though, for this information. I'd love to get it going.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Councillor Martell, you look like you want to say something?
I am very much in agreement with the public meeting and I also agree with all the stuff the mayor didn't say.
Thank you very much, councillor.
I'm in agreement with what the bylaw says about the hens and that. And I'm glad the mayor went first because I had the same question, that and my papers, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I mean, you know, I'd started down the same path as well. I wrote and had some things to write down. But, you know, we'll, I believe that we've got a consensus to give direction to to call a meeting. So please do so. Sorry.
Through the chair, there is a recommendation.
There is, yeah, right, exactly.
So I'll move, so I'll move.
Okay, and I'll even read the recommendation so we know we're moving and seconding. That committee directs staff to schedule a public meeting to consider the proposed zoning bylaw amendment and further recommend that council direct staff to draft a policy ensuring or requiring permits for domestic fowl coops that will ensure compliance with setback requirements. All right. So now that we have that on the table, any other comments for anybody?
You know, just stick to what I had said about, hopefully, when we see that that draft come in front of us, that that, you know, would like to see the the removal of a lot, a lot size, and that it be dependent on the delineations, like, a lot lines.
And I hope we can exclude the permits, too. I don't think we need to go through a bunch of licenses and and permits to have this.
Guess that'll be up for discussion when we get to that point. You guys have anything else you want to add or you're good?
I just had a question through the chair to quell my curiosity. Why is it no roosters? Is it the noise?
Through there, Mr. Chair. Yes, you're correct. Usually that's more of a complaint-driven basis is when you have the roosters in the urban areas. They tend to cause sound issues, so.
That's good. Councillor Smell, do you have anything else to add? Nope. And I can certainly attest to that. I mean, and I love my roosters, but, you know, we have lots of space between myself and my neighbors. So nobody gives me a hard time for that. But I don't have any right now anyways. So all good. Anyways, with that, okay, so all in favor? Okay, good, perfect. It's unanimous. We're going to move on then to 6C Play Recreation. And we have an update from our recreation coordinator on 2024 update and upcoming events.
Thank you. Seniors exercise class run by Senior Support Services has begun for the fall on Wednesday mornings at the South Edwardsburg Community Centre from 9:30 to 10:30. Seniors tech class began on Wednesday, October 23 at the South Edwardsburg Community Centre. This program will be offered on Wednesday evenings from 6 to 8 and Thursday morning from 10 till 12 at the Ingredion Centre. On Sunday, October 27, South Edwardsburg Recreation Association and the Cardinal Festival Committee both hosted a trunk or treat. The kids art class program in partnership with the Spencerville and District Optimist Club has completed the first session. There were 15 participants and majority were children that had been in returning in past classes. The next session will begin on Thursday, November 8. Adult fitness class began on October 1 for eight weeks from 6:30 to 7:30 on Tuesday evenings at the South Edwardsburg Community Centre and will end early December. Holiday cookie decorating will be hosted on December 8 at the South Edwardsburg Community Centre from 12 till 3. This event is for children of all ages. Registration is required and available on the township website. And another thing that is not on the report, Skate with Santa was just finalized. So Skate with Santa will be on December 13 in at the Ingredion Centre from 6 to 7:30 and in Spencerville on December 15 from 2 PM to 3:30.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate the report. Good job, as always, on the quarter. Sorry, something to add there, sir?
I just got a new sweater for Santa.
All right. Do you have any other comments, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much for the report. Senior exercise, senior support, end of December. Are we moving to Spencival in January for the senior exercise?
Through the chair to Deputy Mayor Dilaba, the seniors exercise classes in Johnstown. And currently, we have connected with Senior Support Services and we are unable to find an instructor to offer a program in Spencerville.
So when they're, so when it's the end of December and they're done, they can't come here in January? Is that what you're telling me?
Through the chair to Deputy Mayor Dilaba, the it's the adult fitness class program that ends in early December, not the seniors exercise class.
Okay, now you're confusing me. The one, Mike, maybe help me out because you said that we're coming here in January.
So we have two programs. The one is the adult exercise class. That's on Tuesday night. That's the one that ends in December. The seniors, one that is on the in the daytime at the Hall in Johnstown, that runs continuous. There will be a break probably of two weeks over the Christmas holidays, but it runs continuously through till the summer.
So is the adult one coming here in January then?
No, as the rec coordinator indicated, that we do not have an instructor for that with the CMHAC.
Okay, so what did you announce last week that was coming here in in January?
I announced last week the senior tech class was going to be coming here. Tech.
Wow. So I I just, I don't know, I have a hard time really, really understanding this, that we can get it in Johnstown, but we can't get it here in Spencival. but we can't get it here in Spencerville and Cardinal. I, I have a hard time, I, I mean, I don't know why we can't even hire somebody if we have to ourselves, recreation. Because it's very, very important and it's not fair for the, I don't think, for the members of, of this area.
Uh, I'm not questioning the, the uh, your, your comment about the importance of having a class of that magnitude for seniors in Spencerville or in Cardinal. But right now, the CMHAC are not able to provide someone to teach it. If they were able to find a, an instructor, then we would be able to find them a location either here or in Cardinal to host it. But until such time, we're not able to.
So CMH, CMH can't do it?
That is correct.
Okay, so why can't we do it as a staff of, of uh, recreation, look into hiring somebody?
Well, if, if they're not able to find an instructor, I don't know how we would be able to find an instructor.
Not sure, but have we tried?
No, we haven't.
Oh, I would like to see something, if we can put something together or try to go, think outside the box here and get somebody here in Spencerville. Um, this really upsets me actually. So, maybe we can.
All due respect, uh, Deputy Mayor, um, the fact that there was one being run out here at the Legion and was be, being run by an, an individual that, um, she's retired. So I mean, that was out of our, uh, out of our scope. It wasn't run by the municipality, it was run in cooperation with Legion.
And tha- that's fine, I, I, I can live with that, so, and, and getting back to it, as a facility manager in recreation, can we maybe look at, you know, outside this box and see if we can't get somebody for the Spencerville area in the first of the year?
Make every effort.
Thank you.
And, and, and just to follow on that, I have had a few conversations with some residents in Spencerville who are certainly, um, uh, they had the impression it was coming as well. It's similar to the Deputy Mayor in, in January to Spencerville as well, so uh, uh, it'd be good to hear if we can get something happening there. And I appreciate the work that that, that, that involves as well, so thank you very much. Um, anybody else wanna, anything, Mr. Mayor?
Yep. Uh.
Thank you, Rachel, for the uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Trumpley, for the uh, report. Um, um, my questions would be, um, the, I think the events are, are great. The things that we're doing are, are uh, enhancing the community, they're good. Um, are we getting numbers of people out? Are we filling them up?
Through the chair to Mayor DeChamp, um, for our seniors tech class, we have had a number of individuals attend like evening sessions and daytime sessions. We have about four average each time, which that is pretty good. And they're staying for majority of the, the session there. Um, for our kids art class, our last one was full and our current one is filling up relatively quickly. And for our adult fitness class, we have, I believe, fifteen individuals taking part currently. So I would say, y- yes.
Yeah. Uh, um, when you, when you have those, and I know this isn't a statistics report, but um, when you, when you have those people coming in, I mean, uh, the, I'm just sort of going off what Deputy Mayor was. Are they, you know, Johnstown folks, are they people that are coming from everywhere in the township or outside of the township? Do we have any, any, you don't have to, if you don't know, you don't know, and that's okay. Um, but I'm curious as to, you know, if we know where they are coming from.
Through the chair to Deputy, to Mayor DeChamp, I don't have those, but I can make the effort to add it to registration forms to figure out where our participants are coming from.
Yeah. I get the feeling that the group wants to increase a bit of that, you know, that programming and, and I think that that's great. Trying to understand where we're drawing from before we make those decisions is probably the, the smart way to do it. So, um, you know, I certainly support knowing uh, exactly where they're from and how, and, and how we could work to make sure that all those classes are full. Thanks, uh, Ms. Trumpley for the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Counselor Martel, Counselor Smale, anything from you?
Counselor Smale. Thank you, through the chair to uh, Director Assistant. Anyway, um, your senior tech classes, uh, is it a one-on-one thing? Like, how many people attend, like? And do you decide what? Pardon? And do you decide uh, what you're gonna teach them or like, can they come in there and ask you the questions, what they don't know?
Through the chair to Counselor Smale, um, it is kind of one-on-one. If there's only like two or three people, they come throughout the two-hour block and you can go in and ask them, ask her any questions you have, like how did you use, do something on your phone, how to set up this? Uh, she's very capable of teaching and assisting with that stuff.
Thank you, I was, so I was reading this afternoon, you, you can just walk in at any time, then, okay? Thank you very much.
I just turned it off, sorry about that. Uh, that's good, thank you very much, Counselor Martel. So anybody have anything else to add? Nope. All right, uh, I, I, I echo what council was saying, what committee was saying, pardon me. Uh, good to see all the stuff that's happening as far as the rec goes. You guys have done a, I, I think a great job of, of, of stepping up that profile and uh, and getting the word out and having, having programs running yeah, more, more consistently. And I understand there's some frustration and, and, but you know, we, we gotta, you know, these, these conversations are helpful for helping to identify areas that we think we might want to focus on a limit on and uh, uh, seeing if we can get some actions on those. So I appreciate the report and uh, thank you very much for that. Okay, so moving on uh, to six D, uh, we have a uh, discussion on uh, restrictions to RV camping at the Car- uh, the Cardinal Waterfront. Um, so who's gonna start this off? We're gonna have Counselor Martel start this off, thank you very much, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, this is one I brought to, to the table. Actually, it should say RV parking rather than camping. So I'm not sure that staff is aware of it, but everyone at this table has seen them and I think the Director of Operations included in the emails. We are getting complaints weekly about RVs parking overnight down by the Legion area. It's coming mostly from one source. And you know, maybe they're right, maybe they're wrong, but they do make a good point. What we've got here is, is a bylaw that's almost impossible to enforce. You know, we're not gonna have a bylaw officer go down there at ten o'clock at night and say, you know, you gotta fire up your RV and move it somewhere else. So I'm thinking maybe we're being too restrictive and maybe we should try to be a little more permissive and, you know, take down the uh, and this is, this is just, just my thought, if the table doesn't agree with it, maybe it's not an issue, but we could take down the no parking your RV sign here and put up a sign that says, you know, park here overnight if you want. Here's the restaurants in Cardinal that deliver, here's where the hardware store is, here's the newsletter, you know, we could be a little more permissive and and see if we can get those people to spend a little money in town rather than having a bylaw that we are never, ever, ever going to be able to to, to enforce on an ongoing basis. So I didn't know that was a dialogue we wanted to have or not. I know the Deputy Mayor has said a couple times he doesn't see any issue in campers parking there and just parking overnight, leaving in the morning. We're not talking about campfires or full, full-blown campsites. We're talking about a spot where two or three RVs could park that we have signaled out, this is where RVs can park. They stay inside their RV, they camp, they, they leave in the morning. And that's all I have.
Sorry, thank you very much, Counselor. Uh, anybody have anything to add to that?
Oh.
Mr. Mayor?
Um, I, I certainly um, receive uh, the emails that, that I think everyone receives in, in regard to this. Yeah, I, I have zero issue with, with folks pulling up in their um, you know, their, their van and, and, and parking um, while they go scuba diving or while they enjoy the waterfront for the day, but it's, it's not a campground, nor do I want it to Legion Way to be any form of a, of a campground. Um, so, so when it comes to allowing the overnight um, or encouraging the overnight, I'm, I'm not in favor of that, but um, I think the discretion, the bylaws written in a way that it prevents it from being a bigger problem with campfires and with, you know, those, those issues that come along with it. Um, the discretion that our bylaw officer has in the enforcement of those um, those bylaws should be the discretion of the enforcement officer, not the political will of this, this body. Uh, when it comes to changing the bylaw, I think the bylaw is fine the way that it is. Uh, I think the way that our bylaw officer chooses to enforce or not to enforce it works pretty well and I, I honestly don't really see it uh, as, as a problem. I, I wish um, that, you know, something like the seven thirty truck stop or the old seven thirty truck stop had an area for RV parking so that people that, you know, are looking for a place to overnight, or if they've reached the amount of hours that, you know, they feel that they can comfortably or safely drive. There isn't a Walmart, you know, there's one in Kemphill, one in, in Brockville and one in Cornwall, right? So somewhere between those places, they'd have to make it to all those locations. So a truck stop naturally right off the side of the highway would make the most sense to me, but um, I, I don't want to see campfires at the waterfront and a, and a camper park down there. I just think it just opens a can of worms that I don't want to deal with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I'm, I'm, yeah, I don't even want to get into, to uh, what's, what Mr. Martel brought up about uh, you know, having places where we, we can tell them where they eat and, and, and where the local hardware store and liquor store is. I, I'd rather do it the opposite. I, I know our bylaw en- enforcement officer only has so many hours, I understand that. And he can't maybe enforce some of those that are happening. I'd rather take one, one step further and put it in our budget this year that if we have to hire um, like uh, at the port for security and we have security, a company that comes down from five A M to nine, nine A M, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and if you're there, you're gonna get a ticket. Cause there's a bylaw, there's no parking, I mean, it's very, very plain. We just, we can't police it because we don't have the manpower, it's that simple. I mean, we, and, and our bylaw just can't do it. But I mean, I, I'd love to see us put it in, in our budget this year, to hire security and they can come down and, and enforce it. I mean, I, I think if you see, any of us see a camper there, take a, take a picture of the license and even if the bylaw officer isn't there, you know where it's parked and send it off to our clerk. I mean, I, I think it should be an automatic ticket. And, and, but I'm not sure if, if it's that simple. So I'll leave that, could I have some insight on that from you, uh, Ms. Clerk?
Through the chair, there's uh, multiple things to dive into on that. Um, the budgeting that is at the will of council of direction is brought up at the time of the budget. We can consider something like that, that would be a great financial impact if you're looking at it for just a season or throughout the year. Um, for the bylaw enforcement officer, there is discretion used where if somebody is going down there on the premises of camping, setting up a camp, thinking that this is a great place to visit, great, have at her. However, he will tell them if he is in the area or if he receives the call at the time, that he is able to actually go and speak with them. And he will tell them to move along or you have an hour and pack your stuff up and find one of the campgrounds at the local areas. Um, if it comes to it where somebody shows up in the middle of the night and we get a call or Facebook post or email, et cetera, et cetera, at five A M the next morning and he's not on duty, we will try and get a staff member to inform the individual. However, there are those circumstances where we have met with the individual that is in the camper or trailer or whatever the situation may be, sometimes there's a pop-up tent and they had some technical difficulties, they had a broken tire, they had brake problems, et cetera, et cetera. Those are extenuating circumstances, so our bylaw officer does use discretion and does try to help out those individuals as much as possible. So we, we can't have a hundred percent hard no, hard yes, there has to be some leeway that our bylaw officer is able to grant.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, um, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Um, the other issue I think that I see in that is that, um, and maybe staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not illegal to park an RV there. It's illegal to camp there overnight, right? It's illegal to, like, the parking spot doesn't say it has to be a car.
Correct, uh, through, through the chair to, to the mayor. Um, it just says vehicle, so no person shall park or cause to be parked a vehicle on any municipal parking lot from one A M to seven A M.
Yeah.
That's the parking specific, so it's just vehicle, not RV, whatever.
Yeah, so then we've got to enforce it on cars that are, that are at the Legion then after one o'clock. So if you're there, you leave your car there overnight because you had too much to drink, then discretion of the bylaw would be that up to them, they could issue a ticket, right? It's no different than a camper. But I, I'm, my thought is, is more, I guess, you know, the emails that I receive and, and complaint to this is when people are walking their dogs and they see an RV there, but like, when did the RV get there? How do you know if it was there overnight or not overnight? Did it just get there ten minutes before you parked to take your dog for a walk? Like, there's a lot of other issues there. I, this isn't making an issue out of something that's not an issue and the signage is good, the bylaw is good, the enforcement of it's good. I, beyond me why we're even talking about it.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Counselor Smale, do you have anything you want to add or?
Well, I simply have to agree with the mayor. I mean, I'm down there every morning walking my dog and as the Deputy Mayor said, uh, we could take pictures, but you can't prove how long he's been sitting there. So you can't take him to court, get a, issue him a ticket, you're gonna lose because it's just not gonna happen. Um, for people camping overnight, maybe they broke down like the clerk had said or something, you know, like, there's always circumstances, but I don't, I've been walking there all summer long and I've never seen one camper spend more than one night there. It's just one lady complaining and, I don't know, I don't see an issue with it neither, so that's all I have to say, thanks.
Okay, uh, Counselor Tito, do you have anything else you want to add or you?
No, thanks for the discussion, you know, I get the emails, it's my job to bring it here, like it or not.
Yeah, I, I, and, and, yeah, I, I just thought the, similar to the rest of the committee, that the, the door that gets opened there is potentially far worse than the door we're, you know, we're trying to accommodate for and uh, so yeah, I mean, I, I, I think it's a, aside of the rest of the committee unfortunately, and, and that, I think we should move on from this. Um, I do think we should at some point in time look at our fee schedule because uh, thirty, fifty-five dollars is a heck of a price for a camp sit overnight anyways, if you were to get a ticket and just accept that, so. Um, but that being said, um, I'm gonna move on to the next topic, which uh, is uh, going to be increasing notices of motion, so does anybody have anything they'd like to have uh, brought forward? Nope. Okay, oh, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, no, no. Okay, hearing none, um, then we're gonna move on to uh, number eight, members report, our new uh, our new session here, so uh, does anybody have any, anything they'd like to report?
Okay. Um, the only, the only thing that I um, gonna tiptoe around this a little bit. Um, the only thing that I have uh, to re-report would be um, Wednesday, uh, the planning committee meets at United Counties for the LEER uh, discussion and staff is looking for direction on, on how to proceed with, with um, that. I think at this point, there's only two of us that aren't satisfied with um, the outcomes of the LEER of the ten municipalities that are involved. I don't think North Grenville's happy and I don't think Edwardsburg Cardinal is happy. Um, you know, I, I don't think I have to ask for the support, I appreciate the support that I have around the table. I know that we um, asked for a pause in that by resolution before. I just want to make all the members aware that um, there's only two of us, the way that I see, and, and there's a lot of will. Um, um, there's a mixed will at the, at that table for um, wanting to move it forward and understanding that we have to move it forward um, to complete part of our obligation so that the counties can do its own official plan amendments. So, so it has to move, it has to move forward or the province will en- enforce something upon us. Um, with only two of us in an opposition, I'm fearful that it'll pass eight to two um, with direction to accept the report as possible. So um, my idea is through conversations with Sherry Mills today that um, there, there- that there there, if I can get the support of the mayors around the table to remove a couple of the the properties that we have identified that that they would do that, but it has to be under the direction of the members of the Planning Committee. So I'm going to do my work. I'm going to try to get some of the them removed and do the best that I can. My plan is still to vote against it. But I'm going to try to minimize the, you know, the impact of that while still supporting the need. I think we all understand we have the need to support and preserve what is actually prime farm land. Not a prime farm area as what's being required. So it's a bit of a dispute in in why we protect some of the land. But I just think everybody in a report manner needs to understand that this is going to move forward at some point. I don't know if it'll be Wednesday or not. And I'm doing the best that I can to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I I wasn't sure if you're asking us to have a discussion here or not. I mean,
I don't think so. It's not a discussion item. You've already given the support. We already put the resolution forward. I think I already have that support, right? So it's just more to make everyone aware that that discussion will happen again on Wednesday so that it's not a surprise to anyone. If anybody wants to attend, they're more than welcome to attend. That meeting's at nine o'clock Wednesday morning. But you can also join that meeting online as well.
Yeah, it's an important one because I think the reason that, well, it doesn't matter, you know, we're, yeah, yep. Okay, all right. Counselor Martel, Counselor Smell, anything from you? No. Okay, just on my end, just a few things I wanted to add. Again, thanks to whatever involvement we had, but it was just so good to see the trunk or treat that happened this this past this past weekend. I guess it was before this past weekend, last weekend before that. Great job of that. And, you know, just happy to see there's so many people getting out there and doing the various things in community. Halloween night was great as well. So it was just really nice to see. I drove, I drove through Spencervill and there was everybody was out. It was really nice and that was great. And and, you know, just some of these big events we had in the township itself, you know, there was a I attended on Saturday, the the annual Chinese dinner for at the fairgrounds. And apparently there was over three hundred and fifty guests there. So it was a really, it was really packed in there. It was just really good to see everybody, everybody who was there. So that kind of, that that kind of activity is really, I think, important to helping show that we're a nice, a a nice community. And it's just good to see that various groups put these things together. So and on that, I have nothing else to add. So I guess we'll move on to number nine, then, question period. We don't have any questions from the media? No, no questions in here. So then we move on to number ten, which is closed session, which we do not have. So we move on to a non debatable motion for adjournment. Do I have a mover to adjourn? Moved by the Deputy Mayor and Mary, seconded by the mayor, all in favor? And there's a unanimous decision to close. Thank you very much, everybody.